The time is now four thirty-five P M. Good afternoon and welcome to the October twenty-nine, two thousand and twenty-five Climate Change Action Plan Ad Hoc Committee Meeting. I am Pamela Boozer-Struther, Committee Chair and District Three Board of Education Member. It brings me great pleasure to welcome everyone to today's meeting, and I look forward to our conversation. For those unable to observe now, the meeting is being recorded and can be accessed on the PG CPS YouTube channel for later viewing. The agenda and documents can be found on the PG CPS Diligent page linked from the Board of Education homepage. I thank all of you for committing to this important oversight and partnership work. Ms. McMillan, please call the roll.
Ms. Boozer-Struther?
Present.
Donald Bell? Kate Wonderlick? Joseph Jacuta?
Present.
Christina Quack?
Present.
Timothy Meyer?
Present.
Dorothy Morrison? David Noda?
I had to unmute my present.
David Noda? Beth Novick?
Present.
Ramon Palencia Calvo?
Present.
Antoine Thompson? James Roberson?
Present.
James Dubon Garcia? Maya Gudera?
Present.
Olivia Thomas?
Present.
Sophia Vilar? Michael Witherspoon?
Present.
There are twelve members present.
We have a quorum. Thank you so much. With a quorum present, the Climate Change Action Plan Ad Hoc Committee Meeting will come to order. Item one point three, Adoption of the Meeting Agenda. If there are no objections, the committee shall adopt the October twenty-nine, two thousand and twenty-five meeting agenda. There being no objections, the October twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-five meeting agenda is adopted. Item one point four, Approval of Meeting Minutes. If there are no corrections, the committee shall approve the August twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-five meeting minutes as distributed. There being no corrections, the August twenty-seven, two thousand and twenty-five meeting minutes are approved. Now to item two point O, Presentations. After the Director of Sustainability Report, there are two items for discussion this evening. After each item, we will limit each member's questions and feedback to two point five minutes per round. Unless a motion is taken for additional rounds, there will be two rounds per agenda item. Item two point one, Director of Sustainability Report. The Chair recognizes Director Dorothy Morrison for the Sustainability Report. Thank you, Director Morrison.
Thank you, Board Member Boozer-Struthers. And Micah, do you want to project? Or do you want me to? Let me see if I could project. Are you projecting? I wasn't sure. Are you projecting?
I can. Give me one more.
Okay, sure. Thank you, Micah. So let's go on to the next one. Next slide, please. Okay. All right. So again, good evening, everyone. And so I, as customary, will start off with just giving a general overview of some of the priority areas, some updates. And we don't have updates on every single priority area, but the ones that are on here are highlighted for your convenience. And I have also embedded a number of links so that if folks want to do a deeper dive or get more information, they could access it. So let me just start off by just reminding everyone that we, DSR, Department of Sustainability and Resilience, are starting to plan the Climate Leadership Summit for two thousand and twenty-six. And I had made this ask the last meeting in August, and I'm sort of making another pledge that if folks would like to be part of this upcoming summit in terms of suggesting ideas of what you'd like to see, how you'd want this summit to roll out, please, please contact Kim so that we can incorporate that into the planning because it's getting close. So we want to make sure we have all your comments. And going on to updates on climate curriculum and training, we are also in the process of partnering with Eco-America to do the Climate Ambassador's Training. This year, there will be one in December the fifth from five P M. to eight P M. The training is generally open to all PG CPS staff, and it's an opportunity for them to have professional development credits. Also new is office hours. So we have, I guess, monthly meetings with the different workgroups in the climate implementation process. And a priority area one has decided this year we will have office hours. And this is an opportunity to have others, staff, students, sort of engage with implementation committee members so that they can learn more about climate and just be able to have a deeper dive in terms of one-on-one conversation. So that's available. And the contact person, I don't, I apologize, I don't have this link on here, but I could probably update it later. The contact person for that would be James Roberson. Moving on to Priority Area Two, which is reducing our carbon footprints. We are in the process of renewing our contract with Energy Cap. Energy Cap was a contractor that was responsible for putting our data together for two thousand and twenty-two, I believe. We got a grant from M E A. However, there were some issues with that. It got stalled. So we were able to sort of reengage with Energy Cap, and we're almost there in terms of getting completed our two thousand and twenty-two data. And also we're moving from two thousand and twenty-two through date to two thousand and twenty-three to date. We'll have those datas available. And once we do, it's going to go into Portfolio Manager where we can have the opportunity to do greater analysis of our energy data as we use them on a month-to-month basis. So more to come on that, but just thought it would be good for folks to know that this is, this is our baseline data. You know, we need it to move forward. We can't really move the needle if we don't have baseline data. So we're very data, data poor at the moment, but hopefully in the next several months, we would have populated everything, and we will be able to see the trends in terms of how we're utilizing energy and how we're saving energy in our different projects that we implement. Also, along that same vein, as we all know, we're in really, really tough times in terms of budgeting. So we have a lot of deferred maintenance that need to be addressed, but funding is low. So one of the things, we're looking at other alternatives to supplement or acquire funding. And so on October tenth, we did have a meeting with the Maryland Department of General Services and the Agency for School Construction to talk about ESCOs. Now, ESCOs stand for Energy Service Companies, and these are companies that are able to, to put in a simple form. They are able to provide funding upfront for various projects, whether it's, I guess, HVAC replacement, what have you. They're able to provide that funding upfront, and then they're responsible for maintaining whatever projects or appliances and tools that we, we get to help us reduce our, our energy savings. So they will provide the funding upfront, so the school system does not have to. And then we would sort of pay them over a period of years. Generally lasts like fifteen to twenty years, but we have not decided fully that we're going to do this, but we are open to consider it because funding is tough right now. So that, so we have, we've had Maryland Department of General Services talk to our leadership, and we are seriously considering potential of using ESCOs as a means of financing our projects. And for Priority Area Three, which is Renewable Sources of Energy, our commitments in that area. Sheila Stevens, one of our program managers, will do a deeper dive into that. As well as Priority Area Four, which is Low Carbon School Transportation, Director Eva Baldwin will lead that discussion as well. So I'm gonna, you know, just move on to the next slide, and they will do the presentation after this one. With regards to Priority Area Five, so now we have, I think I reported during the last time that we had developed an administrative procedure, but now that procedure has actually been approved, and we have been able to distribute the administrative procedure to schools with resources and slides to help guide them in terms of waste reduction. We are also looking to expand our composting program this fall to six additional schools. And DSR, in partnership with the Schmidt Center, has held six compost and recycling educational sessions for schools since the start of the school year. So we, obviously, education is key to implement sustainability, and so we do our very best to train, you know, students, teachers, principals, as well as staff. Priority Area Seven, more to come on this. So one of our program managers, congratulations. This Christina just had a baby girl, so she was, she was out for a few months. But now she's back, and she will be ready to assume that particular action item, which is looking at community food forests and community gardens. Community food forests is a means to get the community involved in terms of growing food that, well, actually utilizing our school property, underutilized school property to grow food, whether it's fruit trees or just vegetables. So we think that's a good thing. That's another way to help us increase our locally grown food for our kids as well as the community. And the last item, I just wanted to let folks know that, you know, given the current challenges that we have, we feel it's really necessary to engage as much as possible with as many partners as we can, listen to others' challenges, and figure out how we can leverage resources from each other. So we have been looking at opportunities to engage with stakeholders. So I just here, I just listed some of the organizations that we have sort of tried to engage with over the last couple of months. So the Maryland Clean Energy Center had their annual conference. I think it might have been two weeks ago, so we were there. The Greater Washington, I apologize for the acronyms because this is a PowerPoint presentation, and you won't have to write everything out. But so the Greater Washington Regional Clean Cities Coalition also gave us a nice shout out at their annual event last week. And then we have the Center for Engagement in Environmental Justice and Health, which was born out of the University of Maryland, but it's now a standalone nonprofit. And so we have been engaged with them as well. They have been our partners in terms of getting things like air monitors into our schools to have our children sort of participate in air quality monitoring. So we're very happy to partner with Siege. And then in terms of upcoming events, we have the Ruby Bridges Walk to School Day. I believe it's November the fourteenth or fifteenth, thereabout. And so I have provided a link here. If folks are interested and want to participate or be involved, share it with others. The link is right there for you to use. Another event that is coming up soon, November twentieth, the County Executive will be holding a Climate Leadership Summit, very similar to what we had about two years ago with just for PG CPS. And the goal of the summit is to have a whole of government approach in terms of involving all the county agencies and climate leaderships to providing education to all the different arms of the county and figuring out next steps in terms of how we move forward with, with climate action. And we have PG CPS, you know, is going to be fully represented there. The County Executive specifically asked for student voices, so we will have some of our students. Thank you, Beth Novick, for, you know, helping to work with the, with the students to be able to speak at this event. Our very own Board Member Boozer-Struthers will also be facilitating a session there as well. So again, you have a link to the event, and I believe it's now open to the public because before, when they started off, it was just solely for county officials, but it has been broadened to state officials and other members. So feel free to go on there and, you know, register if you can make it. I believe it's, it'll, they're expecting over three hundred participants. It's going to be at the Prince George's County Community, I'm sorry, Prince George's, yeah, Prince George's County Community College in Lanham. And just to mention, we are also looking out for opportunities to be recognized for the wonderful work we're doing. And so we are applying for a couple of potential awards, and we'll just keep our fingers crossed that we get them. And Program Manager Sheila Stevens has been diligently working on the NSBA Magna Awards, which is centered around indoor air quality. And that's due, I believe it's this Friday, October the thirty-first, and we will get something in. Another award opportunity we're looking at is the Maryland Sustainable Maryland Award, which is the Governor's Award. And we are looking at potentially applying under the policy aspect of it. I think we could probably apply for two, but, so yeah, so we will be applying for that. That is due, I believe it's November the seventeenth. Again, I have a link provided for you right there. So you feel free to go in and, and get more information with that. I will stop there and ask if anybody else, if anybody has questions on the Sustainability Report.
All right, great. Thank you so much, Director Morrison. So the floor is now open. If anyone has questions, you can raise your hand. Give everyone a moment. I see Timothy Meyer.
Hello, everyone. First, I'd say thank you to Director Morrison for highlighting Ruby Bridges Walk to School Day. And for everyone who has not done the event before, it is November fourteenth. So yeah, November fourteenth, Friday, and we have at least two PG CPS schools signed up so far. But anyone else, if you have connections in your, either, those of you who are teachers, former teachers, students who have interest in participating in Ruby Bridges Walk to School Day, I'd encourage anyone, you can reach out to me directly, and I'm willing to help any PG CPS school participate in that and follow the template that we've built at Mount Rainier Elementary. My specific question for Director Morrison was, on Priority Seven, you mentioned about trying to have policies that are more friendly to community food forests, community gardens. And I was just wondering if you could speak a little bit more, if you could speak a little bit more about that because we've had situations in our, in the past at our school where we have done community gardens, and we've been told by other parts of PG CPS that we're not really supposed to have community gardens, and there seems to be a disconnect sometimes depending upon which department you're talking to. So just if you can talk more about what your office is working on, and then based on your answer, we can figure out ways to make sure all of PG CPS is aligned on that issue.
Certainly, right. And that is very true. Depending on who you talk to, the answer may be different. So we have had a couple of, maybe more than a couple, a few organizations who have approached us with this whole concept of having community gardens. And, and I have to say that there had been some hesitancy, I guess, first being the whole liability issue, having, you know, outsiders come in and being on school properties, right? And that's, that's the reason why we're trying to develop some sort of administrative policy, go through the legal review process, so that when we have these organizations come in, we can, with a unified voice, say, well, hey, we do have a policy in place. We did go back and forth with our leadership in terms of how we use our land. We have thought about things like, you know, stolen property, so there's like, okay, we might want to monetize these lands. So maybe we don't want to go ahead and say yay to the, to the community gardens. But based on the internal conversations we've had to date, there's definitely an acceptance now to be able to open up to community gardens, but we just need to do it legally where whatever organization decides to work with us on community gardens or food forests will not hold the school system liable. So that was one of the main, oops, it's my timeout. Well, okay, so that was pretty much it. So yes, so we are definitely working on that. You will be hearing more.
I would love to have a follow-up conversation on that, but I expect the time, the timing, I can follow up in a round two if there is one.
Okay, sure.
All right, thanks. Joseph, I saw your hand pop up for a second. Do you have a question?
I just had a statement. I'm just very glad to see that the school system, the PG CPS was looking at working with ESCOs. I know that was something we talked a lot about when we were first advocating for this work. And I'm, I'm looking forward to when we get into that topic in more depth later on in the cycle.
Yeah. And let me just say this, so also, Joseph. So the school system, you know, way before I even got here, had, didn't have the best experience in the past. They had tried to work with ESCOs, but it wasn't a good experience. But a lot of that was due to the fact that, I'm going to say we, even though, you know, but we didn't have the expertise on how to sort of manage because it does require a lot of staff time to oversee the companies, to make sure they're doing the right thing. We need to make sure all the numbers have been determined upfront. So that wasn't done, so as a result, we had a bad experience. So this time around, we are talking to as many folks as we can, including the state, to help guide us through the process. And the state also has consultants in place who are available to kind of walk us through it. So we're hoping, we're hopeful that this time around it will be more successful.
Thank you.
Tim, if you would like a round two, I think we have time for that.
Sure, I'll go ahead and take, since there's not many questions, I'll go ahead and take advantage of that. And I can actually just, based upon the people who are in this meeting, I can say we were able to host Sheila and some of the sustainability team the end of last school year. And so you were able to see, we have an interesting dynamic at our school. We have some area that is school, school grounds that are right by the school that are fenced in. And then we have some that, that really does, some areas that work as a perfect kind of hybrid community slash school space where we can still have fencing for security reasons. But that's the reason I was asking about the community gardens because in our case, the group that would be interested in doing something would be the PTO. During the pandemic, that when, during the pandemic, when school grounds were essentially closed to everyone, we sprung into action and had turned it, an area into a community garden, temporary community garden space. And then that's why, after the fact, we were then told by other parts of PG CPS that you weren't allowed to do that. So I.
That sentiment is changing, and I definitely, you know, if you have a garden like with anything else, it has to be maintained, right? So maybe all that would be clearly articulated in whatever AP we provide that, you know, it has to be fully, you know, managed and taken care of. So yeah, that's, that's the plan.
Well, just even beyond this committee, if you need any parents who have experience in this area helping you as you were building out the draft administrative procedure, I would be happy to volunteer.
We would love that. We'd love to have you.
Definitely would note that.
I was going to say, yeah, Christina's back, and she is definitely going to be like leading that effort, right?
Yeah, in conjunction to the AP that we are creating, just to have a process in place and really know how to articulate that to different interest groups. We are considering a demonstration project along with the AP that we're going to be, we're working with the Food and Nutrition Services Department. And that, that would be a great opportunity to do the demonstration project, incorporate some of these lessons learned, really define what needs to be in this AP process. I was there at the Mount Rainier event, also, Ms. Meyer. So I see, I saw what you guys have done, some phenomenal work, and I see exactly the plot of that that you were discussing in terms of, and that commitment. So it's important in terms of really that commitment, whether it's the external organization or the third party in terms of that, that work, because we've heard of different similar instances. But then when school closes, summer's out, many times people don't, you know, even the maintenance doesn't know that it's actually a garden, and it just gets cleaned up with everything else. So, yeah.
I've had many native grasses mowed over by accident over, over the year, but fortunately, they usually grow back. Thank you.
Great, thank you. So next, Beth Novick, followed by Christina Quack.
Hello, everyone. I love good community garden. Pre-COVID, I worked with Chesapeake Bay Foundation and D C Public Schools where we went to. We studied their environmental, lots of things, their trees programs. And I think they did have a community gardens program that you might just be able to borrow some of their ideas from because I love the idea of making it, how big should it be? How, you know, what's the purpose of it? Making us like a sheet of paper that gives us guidelines. And on that topic, maybe James could, Roberson can answer this. But I think that we were at a brand-new school at Kenmore, and there were rules with the new schools and the landscape. So just to put that out there that you might want to find out about, we, Schmidt Center helped us build a box to put a pollinator garden, and we kept everything inside that box. So that might just be one thing to think of.
And did you say, was that the Chesapeake Bay Trust or Foundation that you mentioned earlier that has a, has a plan? Was that Chesapeake Bay Trust or Foundation?
No, the Chesapeake Bay Foundation.
Foundation, okay.
Right, used to, runs an educators' summer program, and I was the teacher mentor for the educators. But I just got an opportunity to be in lots and lots of D C public schools. And what we were looking at, they did have a truce program. They had many things that were very useful for greening up education. And one of them, I'm pretty sure, was community gardens.
Okay.
No, reinventing the wheel, right?
Exactly.
All right, great. Thank you so much for that tip. Christina Quack is next.
Hi, everybody. Thanks so much for the updates. It's great to hear that so much has been happening over the last couple of months. I had a question about, I didn't hear it mentioned, and just wanted to make sure it was on everyone's radar. But I believe the Maryland State Climate Commission is, their education working group is in the process of, of planning a climate teach-in. But it sounds like a lot of the planning, I think the teach-in is not happening until around Earth Day month next year, but there's a lot of pre-planning going on and especially trying to reach out to other counties that perhaps have a little bit more constraints in terms of being able to participate in all that kind of stuff. So I just wanted to make sure like that was on the radar, and if there is a way that PG CPS could really kind of lead the way in that regard, but yeah, just curious if that's on the radar. Thanks.
Yeah, certainly, it most definitely is. So we participated last year at Prince George's County, one of the few school systems that actually participated, and we plan to participate again this year. As a matter of fact, during our last staff meeting, I was telling everyone that we need to make sure we're making note of all the educational outreach activities for that teach-in activity to sort of, you know, submit what it is that we are doing. So we're very much plugged in, and I believe this go-around, they will, good, starting early, believe it or not. So you don't have to, we don't have to wait till April. We can start submitting what we're doing. It's what I was told, at least the email that I got. So, but yeah, we are, we are definitely in the loop. It's on our radar.
Great, terrific. Thank you.
All right. Thank you both so much. So seeing no more questions for this agenda item, we can now move to the main presentations for, oh, I do, I do see Tim's hand up.
And I'm sorry, this is, I guess, a little bit out of order, but I just wanted to make one announcement on Ruby Bridges Walk to School Day, if I may.
Sure.
Which is that I have been working with the superintendent and his team on trying to get a proclamation to make it an official PG CPS event for this November fourteenth. So still have to follow up with them on that, but fingers crossed, at the November thirteenth board meeting, hopefully, there will be a proclamation to, to make it an official event at least for this year, and then we can establish a precedent for future years as well.
Wonderful. Thanks for sharing that.
Yeah, thank you so much for your work on that. Oh, Beth Novick, hi.
Just really quickly, Tim, I know two schools that might be interested in participating. How can I have them contact you?
We have, I think all of our email addresses are in the, in the invites, or if you just reach out to Pamela, she can connect us. But I would be happy to work with any PG. But I would be happy to work with any PG CPS schools on that. Thank you.
All right, great. Thank you. Thank you both. Um, so now we're moving to item 2.2, presentation of updates on climate change action plan priority number three. This is commit to renewable energy sources for a net zero emissions future. And I will once again recognize Dorothy Morrison to introduce the presenters. Thank you.
All right. So the presenters for priority area three, which is commit to renewable sources, um, would be Sheila Stevens. And then immediately following that would be, uh, Director Keeper Baldwin, who will do a deep dive into where we are with our, um, I guess carbon neutral or decarbonizing our fleet system. So go ahead, Sheila, you want to start?
Sure. Hello. Good evening, everyone. Um, I guess I can share my screen. Okay. Can everyone see that?
Yes.
Okay. Awesome. So I'm providing an update. The, the bulk of my conversation tonight will be on the update for the six phase one P3 schools and where they are now currently with the solar install. So these slides will go over five of the six schools. Unfortunately, I didn't get one of Walker Mill. Um, I reached back out to the company and I, I haven't heard anything back, but I do have five updates and I would imagine Walker Mill is the same because it looks like they're all primar to the same status. So this is Colin Powell, um, and most of these, um, updates will be very duplicative. So I apologize for any redundancy, but they are pictures, updated pictures that I thought you would enjoy to see what it's looking like right now at the current status. So at Colin Powell, um, these are pictures of the roof and right now just all of the equipment's been craned and picked up to the rooftop. Um, they're expecting energize, uh, ener- for the school to be energized, um, in December, hopefully, fingers crossed. This is Drew Freeman and, um, just similar to Colin Powell. As you can see in the pictures, they're, they're working diligently, rooftop racking's complete, the conduit has been run. Module installation is currently underway and then the expected energization date is January. Hi, it's Phil Middle School. All very similar, uh, with the expected, um, date to be energized in December. But they are, this, this update that I was provided was about two weeks ago. So I'm sure there'd be more to report and I'm happy to continue to update the team. Um, and whenever you, uh, want to be updated, you can just reach out to me. Kenmore Middle School, they are a little bit, a little bit further behind, um, but they're hopefully going to be energized in early February. And here's Sonia Sotomayor Middle School, similar update with their, um, date to be energized, hopefully in late January. I'm hoping to get an update on Walker Mill. Walker Mill, in case, just for your, um, situational awareness. Walker Mill was one of the schools that I applied for the, uh, MEA Solar On Schools, uh, grant last year that we were awarded about, uh, we were awarded $396,000 for those solar panels on, um, Walker Mill. So I'm eager to get that update, uh, for me to provide MEA that, uh, that update when I do my grant reporting. That's all I have to share. Whoops, stop sharing. And then my other update that I have on just solar in general at the district level, we, um, in case you weren't aware, put out an RFI. This was, uh, back in the summertime, we put together a list of questions to be put out on Emma, um, in the public, um, forum for any solar stakeholders to, to respond, to answer this question so that we could kind of get a really good snapshot of what the market looked like at the time. And then a lot of things shifted while the RFI was active, uh, at the federal landscape. And so we extended the date of closing till October 20th so that we could try to kind of get our finger on the pulse of what was, what was the, um, the mood, uh, after those changes went in place. So we will take the RFI responses and then, you know, make a very, uh, you know, more decision, I'm sorry, data-driven decision on how we can craft an RFP that we can put out there for us to, the goal is to have, you know, more than one solar installer that we could use kind of like on an on-call as need basis, instead of us just constantly getting barraged with, you know, all these solar companies that want to do business with us. But we want to make sure that we go through, you know, the procurement process. And so that is the hopes of the RFP. Uh, but that'll take some time to kind of craft that. We'll work with our purchasing and procurement department and then DSR internally and get that developed. And so hopefully we can have more wonderful updates for you at a later date. And that's all I have for solar or renewable.
All right. Great. Director Morrison, why don't we go ahead and take questions on this?
Right. Thank you.
Transportation. Um, I'll wash, give everyone a second to raise hands for any questions on this report.
There, oh.
But go, go ahead, go ahead, Ms. Novick.
Okay. So there's four students on here, two Kenmore students. And I think it might be helpful to be able to visualize exactly what you're talking about. Like, what does that mean? We're putting solar panels on top of the school and then it's going to heat the building. Um, they're working with Lynn McCauley to start to try to put out some information from young people on some of these topics. So could you bring this down to the layman's terms for us? What's happening?
Sure, 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 sure. I'll try to do my best. Um, so basically the, we're going to be, uh, entering into a PPA or we have entered into a PPA with a, uh, with a, a solar company. And basically that what that means is that we're not taking ownership of the panels. We're basically leasing them for the next 15 to 20 years. Um, I don't know the exact length or term of the PPA that we signed. Um, and we're basically just going to be taking the energy that the solar panels produce and buying that from them so that we're not going to be taking all, and again, I'm not sure. Once I see this in place and then we can kind of get an idea of what the production will look like and what it actually, um, what the school needs. And then whatever the delta is, we would be getting, we would purchase from the grid like we do now. Or anything that's in a surplus would theoretically go be sold back to the grid. Um, so it's not necessarily just providing heat in general. It's just any electric that's generated from the solar panels. So it's, uh, that, that green attribute that we can, we, we necessarily, we can't necessarily claim the green attribute or the Rex, the SRX because we're not owning them. The solar company is going to take that, but we can at least say that we are purchasing renewable energy in the form of solar at these six locations with the hopes of obviously building our portfolio of solar over time. Um, we, we, and that's part of the RFI was question. We're trying to figure out what is the best situation or scenario or the best interest of PG CPS of taking ownership? Or, or the PPA? And there's pros and cons on both sides. So this will be a really good exercise for us with these six schools to kind of get that, just kind of like, you know, test the waters. Um, and then our next round of the second, the phase two P school, P3 schools, which there are eight of them and all eight will have solar and the solar design just is wrapping up. So we're going to be moving forward, but we're hope to own those.
Thank you. Um, you have a follow-up question, Ms. Novick?
So am I understanding right that the, the solar that's collected is not going directly to those schools? The solar that's collected is going into like a, an energy opportunity that reduce that because we have nice flat roofs?
No, no, we'll be, no, those, that solar that's produced from those arrays will directly benefit each of those six schools that they're currently getting. It just may not be enough. You know, if we have rainy, a, a week of rain, there isn't going to be enough. So we always have to be able to buy from the grid because there's no guarantee that those solar panels be able to produce all of the load that that school demands.
And what does the solar provide within the school? What, what energy does it?
It lights HVAC, whatever the building is needing, it's convert, that, that the AC to DC power is, and I don't know all of the engineering, uh, ins and outs of solar. It's kind of like a, you know, I'm learning as I go along. But it will just provide power to the school, just like if we just had that transformer or that power coming from the line into the main feed of the building. So it's connected into the main, into that whole mechanical area. And it will be providing whatever power is needed. And then it's obviously the whole, you know, there's times where there might be a surplus like at, you know, I don't know when, like if, if, if school's out for a holiday or whatever, it's still going to be producing, but it's not going to be needing it all. They think at that point, then it'll benefit the community theoretically by it going back out that surplus, what's not needed. That's typically how it's set up. But I'm not a hundred percent sure on all the engineering parts of how it's could gets from the panels, the arrays to the main feed and all of that.
But I feel super informed. Thank you very much. The good information. Thank you.
Okay.
Great. Thank you. Uh, Joseph?
Hi, um, as a, a person with a PPA on their home, I believe you described it pretty much spot on there, Sheila. I, I had a question and a comment. Um, the question was, uh, what, what are the cost savings you're expecting to see over this, uh, grid electricity on these? And the comment was, if you are, if you are doing any schools that are right next to DC, just make sure you look at the feeder lines, because if the school's connected to the DC feeder lines, the SRX question changes because you can get DC SRX. Um, so, um, and I know there's only a few schools that that might qualify, but just, just keep that in mind. But yeah, the question though, more be for what, what are the cost savings you guys are going to see?
You know, I don't have the cost savings. Um, Jamie Austin, who's, um, uh, on extended leave, she was involved in that PPA review during that time. And I have not seen them, but we know that the PPA is going to be less at some point, and there's going to be an escalation rate over the next 15 to 20 years. But it's not supposed to go over what our current electric rate is at the standard offered service, like the SOS that the electric company is providing. You know, we are making sure that we are negotiating these contracts that we're not going to be paying more than we would have been before. So the whole goal is to always say just a little, well, hopefully a lot or at least a significant amount below the standard rate that we would put, you know, that you're paying at home or, or the school's paying right now. But I don't know that, Joseph, but I, that is something that I, I think would be, would be valuable for us to know. So I'm gonna, I'll dig into that for you. And I can report back.
Yeah. I, I know when I, I, for a time I also had the, the PPA with Panorama landfill. And I think that was giving me a 10% savings on my home electricity bill. So I know that, that they typically, at, at least with the current, the residential sector, they're usually giving a, a little bit of a discount off of which we'd be paying.
Awesome. All right. Uh, Timothy Meyer?
This is more of, thank you. This is more of a quick observation, which is that for the phase one schools, we will also have the benefit of having several different, several years worth of energy bills to be able to compare and contrast with, uh, including in certain months when, like in throughout the winter, when energy use might spike and be able to compare like July versus July. Um, so just thinking longer term, as we, as we continue to tell the story of the PG CPS climate change action plan, I'd be very interested two or three years from now in seeing the data of what the energy bills was for these phase one schools in the first, say, two years of their lifespan. And then go, going forward, once we have this in place.
Yes, agreed. And that's the language I love to speak the most is to take the data and to use it. Um, and so I can't wait to start, I'm in the process of trying to get all of that, um, in a more, uh, you, it's just more available. So I'm working on that. But yeah, so those first two years will be their baseline data. And then we can project that out for the next, you know, life of these solar panels and then hopefully see this beautiful picture of savings. But also more importantly, you know, we're going to certainly see the greenhouse gas emission savings. You know, we may not always see a monetary savings, but we, for the client, you know, and, and we hope we see both, but we'll, we should certainly see the greenhouse gas emission savings.
Uh, I always say that we are the national leader on this issue and continuing to, we've done a very good job over the last few years of going to conferences and other places and telling the story. But I want to make sure that PG CPS continues to tell the story of climate change action success, um, so that we can just take the program and rebuild and keep expanding upon it. The story, the storytelling part is one of the things we're very focused on.
Yeah. Yeah, that is not lost to us. That's, that's, that's part of our goal too. Yeah.
All right, great. Um, I don't see any, any other hands, but I'll, I'll take a moment to ask the question around, um, uh, definitely the discussion of storytelling that we do also like to have celebrations and events to mark occasions. And I, I was wondering if, I know when we were able to do that with the new Ellen Achoa Net Zero School, we were able to actually walk up internal staircases to the roof and we were, you know, the guests of the event were able to actually go up and see the panels and, and we could do photographs. Do we have that opportunity on these six middle schools or were they built differently?
Well, these do not have geothermal. No, they don't have any geothermal. So we wouldn't have that, you know, that net zero aspect to, to put out to the community. But they are still more energy efficient buildings. Um, and there were, they still generated, I believe there were some savings that there are savings that were calculated, energy models are done. And especially when you have the solar on top of that. So I'm not sure what type of opportunity that we could, you know, take advantage of with these. But the certain, the second round will be the ones that we're getting all these net zero grants for, that I'm applying for another round of net zero grants that solar on roof, you know, like all of these wonderful grants that, um, you know, are typically geared for uh, incentives tracks where, you know, there's an overburdened or underserved community. So we got all these great, you know, things that we can celebrate with the second round. And I'm, I'm not sure what we could do for the first round, but it's something we can look into and discuss with Director Matlock.
Right. And I was going to say too, so I mean, obviously the, the second round, um, of P3 schools will have, I think the seven out of eight are going to have geothermal. Um, however, the, the current ones, I guess, you know, there are other things you can boast about, like, you know, the, the EV readiness, you know, solar and things of that nature. So we can certainly look into it to see what opportunities, uh, the mere fact that they're, uh, a minimum lead seal if I believe. I don't know if any, anyone was gold off the top, but, but yeah, I mean, that is something that, and if folks are interested, we will definitely try to highlight it too on the websites as well, so that, um, you know, we're getting the message out there. So even if it's not a physical event where people are going through for tours, we're going to at least have them, you know, the visuals on our webpage, which is another, you know, we're working on updating that as well.
Okay. Yeah. I think you've confirmed that it, the, the visual of the tour is not, the buildings weren't built for people to be go, to be able to get up to the roof as safely as Ellen Achoa. So we would have to do this differently. And I do think it's a great opportunity for our student team, um, as Beth was noting to, to be part of that, you know, the, the video storytelling. I mean, this is pretty significant because we, we only have, I mean, Oxon Hill High School, um, and Ellen Achoa are two biggest. Um, and then we have, uh, smaller, smaller solar installation, a University Park Elementary. So to jump to the si- to these big six buildings is definitely something I, I would like to see us definitely do, do something where we can get that attention. And, and have that lead by example, that there's news articles out there for our colleagues around the state to see what, what we can do. And, um, and so I'm, you know, of course, happy to, to help with that. So, so thanks. So we'll continue that conversation with our, with, uh, Beth and the student team.
Awesome. Sounds good.
And of course, uh, Michael, Maya, Olivia, you know, if, if any of you want to jump on and, and have some reflective thoughts on this being a storytelling item, I, I could pause for a second. I know some or all of, some or all of you are in transit usually. Some or all of, some or all of you are in transit usually during this meeting. It's hard to be on camera. Thanks, Michael.
I, I am in transit. I think it's a really cool opportunity. Um, and I really think that it would help the students of Prince George County actually get to see. What we're doing.
Did we lose them?
Yeah, thank, thank you so much. I, I, I mean, we, yeah, we definitely have to show the students how we're making progress. I. Really appreciate that. So we'll, we'll keep following up. Uh, but I will move us on to our final item and we have, um. Uh, thirty five minutes for the presentation and discussion on. The updates on priority number four, school bus transportation, reducing emissions for a greener future. And, uh, this is, um, uh, I will now, uh, recognize Dorothy Morrison to. Uh, lead us through this presentation and discussion and the presenter's introduction. Thanks.
Thank you. And I, with that, I would like to yield to Director, uh, Kiba Baldwin to proceed.
Good evening, good evening. I hope everybody can hear me and can see the presentation on the screen. All right. Thank you for the invitation to provide, uh, a little update on where we are in terms of our. Electric school bus initiative and what we've been doing. So I'm going to do my best. To try to capture everything, um, as much as we can and just offer an opportunity to have a good discussion and questions, uh. Based upon the presentation. So let me start here. So just some talking points this evening, um, around the main categories within the priority four. Modifying our bus routes for fuel use, electrifying all buses by twenty forty, increasing the walking, biking, public transit use. Uh, and eliminating some unnecessary idling from school buses. Um, some of gonna, I'm gonna kind of capture. Most of this in, in a couple of slides here. So we have a fleet of roughly twelve hundred buses. Right now they're all diesel. Uh, excuse me, scratch that. Twelve hundred, um, plus our diesel. We have twenty one electric school buses on site. We have generically have four mobile charging trailers that were purchased to. Uh, power those electric buses now. So considering the F Y. Twenty four, twenty five school year, twenty three, twenty four school year and the F Y twenty four, twenty four, twenty five school year. In terms of total routes, this is where we were twelve hundred in F Y twenty four. And we drove. Close to seventeen million miles that year. F Y twenty five, we were able to reduce our routes to a thousand and have. Right under, um, that seventeen million dollars, seventeen million mile mark. A lot of that work was done as a result of an audit. Uh, by our consulting company, uh, named Formative. And within that audit, uh, we. They gave us, um, or they noted some findings and we received back twelve recommendations. On what we could do to make our transportation department, uh, run smoother. And it was a full comprehensive review from the operations side, the staffing side, um, budget, everything. And so the first step was, um, five priority recommendations that we implemented. And some of those five are, are a direct result of the reduction in routes. Uh, and the reduction in miles driven. And so just a couple of. The recommendations and outcomes where we were able to remove three thousand stops. Um, that's tremendous when you're considering, uh, what we were tasked with and what we're still tasked with. While dealing with a severe driver shortage. Definitely as a result, we, we are having to, um. Consolidate more routes as a result of having fewer drivers. What that does, it, it, it muddies the waters a lot because I can't, um, have a good clear. Um, data collection method, um, to separate for each trip. Uh, because we're having to double up trips, uh, we're in, we have to split trips. And, and this is all operational in order to try to do our best to provide an on time and safe arrival for our students. And so. This number I hope will get better for us, um, as we continue to optimize and refine our routes. To, uh, produce a clearer picture, then definitely the mileage that we can track in the miles driven. Um, and the gallons used, all of that can come into play. Uh, but right now it makes it really hard to give us a good clear picture. So this is our numbers. This is our baseline that we're going to work with and be able to talk about that, um. On an annual basis. Hmm. So the move to electrify our buses by twenty forty, uh, this has been a daunting task thus far. What we're working with is, um. The challenges that it has, that has hit us in terms of procuring electric school buses and. Uh, identifying an adequate infrastructure to support those electric buses. So what we are proposing, looking at it and really looking at it from a scientific standpoint that. We want to introduce propane as an intermediary, intermediary fuel. Uh, because our current infrastructure can't yet support our electric bus charging plans. And so with propane, uh, we compare it with the diesel. What, uh, what it emits and how it is a cleaner fuel than diesel. In terms of the carbon dioxide, um, it emits fifteen to twenty percent less than diesel. The nitrogen oxides in this, uh, reduces by up to ninety percent, which directly improves the local air quality. And there's no soot, or particulate matter in which we have, um, on the diesel buses now. And. So implementing a complimentary fleet of electric buses remain our long-term goal. Propane, propane allows us to kind of make some immediate progress toward emission reductions. While continuing to replace the aging diesel buses under our replacement plan. This approach lets us begin achieving climate benefits now while building the infrastructure needed to support the full electrification process. Within this as well, uh. We are continuing to work with our climate improve, um, excuse me, capital improvement teams. Um, as we talk about the development of our bus lots right now, I know that you guys had an update. In the previous meeting about our Mulliken project and understand that project with, has been canceled. Uh, but we are working on a secondary plan to fulfill that need. Uh, but. All of our bus lots are in a condition that we need vast improvements, um, or structurally from. The driveways to the facilities. And so whatever we do, we want to be able to, uh. Fully support the initiative, uh, one hundred percent. And, and so in order to fully support. The E V initiative, we're going to have to kind of do some, some housekeeping. Just to maintain, bring our facilities up to par to sustain that. So, uh, we're looking forward to it. It's a good challenge. Uh, in our conversations, uh, just in-house, this, um, has become. A good, um, solution, uh, where we feel that. It's a less hassle to provide the infrastructure for propane. And still give us as much of the results that we would be getting from the electric school bus initiative. All right. So just to talk about a little bit what we have in our inventory, um, just to provide you some pictures of where we are and what you see here. Uh, we continually to, we continue to work with our vendors, our O E M partners. Uh, what they do for us is provide the, the training, the structure. That is needed to support. And so I'm giving you a picture here of one of the electric school buses. Uh, this is one of the I C models. We actually have, um, eleven of these buses ready to go. And a little look at the engine, uh, some of the things that you don't see there, uh, that you would see in a regular engine. There's a radiator and a fan, uh, that's not there, there. And then here's an example of. What you see is our mobile charging trailer. And so we have four of these. Uh, three of them are level two chargers with seven dispensers around it. And I have one that is a level three charger and that basically has one. Um, one dispenser, I mean, it's going to be one charger, two dispensers. And so, uh, if you want to imagine, I, my folks gave me the example of how we would have to set this up. Um, it's kind of like a little daisy flower where the charger sits in the center and then we would have seven buses. Um, situated around it to charge where we could have plugged that dispenser to the side of the bus. Uh, we won't be able to do that exactly, but we will be able to get at least three to four buses. Um, to one charging trailer, um, to, to work. And so, um. We are preparing for that. Uh, we are getting staff ready to do that. One of the conditions that we have, most of our staff. Uh, do not carry what we have on the buses, an air brake endorsement. Um, and our diesel buses, we use hydraulic brakes. So there's no extra endorsement needed. And so. Uh, our drivers that like to drive the bus right now have to get that extra endorsement. Um, in order to drive the bus, um. From that standpoint. And so that's just a little minor glitch that we've seen, but it's workable and we can move around that. So, but we do depend on our O E M partners to provide training. Um, and that's something that we stepped up. I know within the local twenty two fifty, uh, contract, that was one of the. New additions is providing more training. Uh, that was already on our plan. To do more face-to-face technical training because that's what it has come to. The vendor wants our, they, they have, they give us a product, they sell us a product, we take the product, they want the product to run. So it's in their benefit to kind of provide us with the training, um, anything that's needed to support. Uh, our drivers and our staff to drive the bus, to fix the bus in that respect. So we have, uh, constant communication. And we are working a, what I call a professional development plan that we touch about, touch upon, uh, each, each semester. So I've asked, I asked, uh, or gave an invitation to our safe passage coordinators and they were not able to attend. Uh, this meeting, but they sent and shared some details that I want to share with you. On what they've been doing as related to, um. Increasing the walking and biking and public transit use. So. Right now, I know that you guys mentioned the Ruby Bridges Foundation and that has been, uh, one of the first. I guess, community service pieces that the safe passage coordinators, uh, have been a part of. And if you haven't, um, if you've not met them, they're two. Gentlemen, um, Mr. Flood and Mr. Colther. And they have been introduced to a lot in their short time with us. And, and. But it's a great position. I think those two gentlemen were the right hire. Uh, because of their background and the willingness that they're willing to do to step in. And be a part of something good. Uh, and this goes from what they're helping me on with doing some. Um, site bus stop assessments, we do, um, safe passage assessments. But the biggest part was the participation in the Ruby Bridges program. Um, they shared with me they had worked with two schools. But also we wanted to highlight all of the schools that have taken a part within the Ruby, uh, Bridges program. And just to share that, this is an up and coming. I would love to see more of our schools get involved with this. Um, I loved it. Uh, I've worked with this in another school district and, and with P T As, P T Os. And everyone thought it was a, an awesome opportunity and looked forward to the annual events. So. They definitely are a part of this and, and will be continuing to be a part of any of the community service related to. Uh, the, the walk, walk and bike to school programs. So that's something they wanted me to emphasize to the group as well. Um, when it comes to the Department of Public Works and Transportation. Uh, that is another connector for them. We have a monthly meeting. With the Safe Passage Group, Vision Zero Group within the county that falls under the Department of Public Works and Transportation. And so within that meeting, we are able to talk more about the barriers that we face in the school system. Where we have no sidewalks, where we do not have adequate crosswalks. Those are components that we can now link to the county and try to build a priority listing. To where we can have those, um, traffic calming components installed. And so those two gentlemen, along with Director Cunningham and his staff, sit monthly with the county officials. To have these discussions. And so, uh, we're, I'm appreciative of that because that is one of the biggest barriers for me. And battling where to put bus stops because we have so many of our neighborhoods that don't have sidewalks. And so that reduces the, the walk to stop distance. And, and we're trying to kind of balance out the walk to stop distance to help eliminate some of the bus stops that we have. So. Um, it's a, it's a joint effort to try to do what's right and, and try to put everybody kind of like on a win-win. Uh, because these are things that we're going to have to constantly do. But their, their participation in the county meetings, um, are, are paramount. And so I did want to mention that crossing guards, requesting traffic studies, pedestrian crosswalks. All of those items ca, fall under the county and actually under the Department of Public Works and Transportation. And they do have a website in which homeowner, um, not homeowners, but, um. Communities can request all traffic calming studies and equipment. But it has to be done by the homeowners association and their presidents to do that. And so now that I know, you know, we quietly talk to homeowners, um, homeowners associations. And say, you can put this request in if it's needed. I mean, it, it's, it's stronger coming from the homeowners association than it is for the school system. We can come in and support it and, and, and bring it up and, and let them know. Here's what it is when it comes to the number of kids, uh, the bus stops and what we're trying to do to improve. The conditions for our students. And so, and then the work that they work with me directly with pedestrian safety. Bus stops, they've done a hundred and thirty seven safety assessments so far this school year. And between the two of them, that's a lot of work. And so it's appreciative, um, that what they do, um, for us. It is, it will be an impact to, I think, this, this group and as well to our transportation. All right. So idling with our school buses, um, where are we with this? So right now, with the diesel buses. The models that, uh, twenty three, twenty four, um, those models. Come with an automatic shut off. So it's a state law. That we cannot idle a school bus any longer than five minutes. And. But I could tell you, you know, from a, from, from other districts, it's not something that's really policed. Uh, but what we do, uh, for our buses, we have an automatic off switch. So if the bus is idling longer than five minutes, or right at the five minute mark, the bus will automatically shut down. Uh, and so that's a step that we have taken proactively to. Try to bring awareness to the idling component with our staff and, and it's training realistically. And it becomes a plan and a monitoring to, to bring awareness to that for everyone. Uh, my, my staff, school staff from that standpoint. So it is something from operational equipment side we've put in place. Um, another component that we've added to help reduce it because as it gets colder. The staff will get there and they want to start the bus to try to generate the heat. Uh, on our buses, we have, um, heater, it's a Wabasko heater. And it's a program, so realistically drivers can program the heater to turn on fifteen, twenty minutes before they arrive at the bus. And that heater is meant to warm the engine and it produces a little in, um, cabin heat as well, so they're not really getting on a cold, cold bus. And so, um, that's something that has been here. Um, this is, uh, the, the, my supervisor, Mark Dresser and his assistant supervisor, Dave Burgess, have added that as a standard feature to every bus. And so we encourage our drivers to use that, especially when it gets cold, to help with, um, to minimize that idling effect. And so really again, this is teaching, training, monitoring and just encouraging our, our folks to, to take advantage of the resources that are here for them. But this is an ongoing thing to help reduce the idling. And one of the other pieces that we talk about is safety and other amenities on the bus. Uh, right now, we have a set of buses, our Bluebird buses. Uh, that's the second model of bus that we have, uh, and our electric buses have seat belts. Right now, we have no ordinance or no AP procedures that would mandate students. It's a totally optional component. We do have integrated bus seats in which they operate kinda like your car seat in the car. But our youngest, um, scholars, say age, um, three to four-year-olds, we do put them in an integrated car seat. This is a two-strapped, um, vest where the, they can sit in the seat. And so that's a safety piece for them. Uh, there's a ton of bus safety features that we like. Uh, one is the, um, interlock where if the driver does not do a sequence of putting their foot on the brake and changing the gears, the bus will not proceed if, if, um, you push your foot on the accelerator. And so those are some of the safety features that come standard on buses now as we analyze basic acts, accidents and how they occur. So the vendors do a good job of trying to put some protective factors there. And I wouldn't be remiss if I didn't mention our new software, um, the new Chipmunk app, uh, which we rolled out with our, um, sped population. For this past month, in beginning November seventeenth, we will roll out the first phase of the comprehensive, um, routes that we have to use the Chipmunk. And the map, uh, which is something new for our schools. The schools will be able to see their assigned buses now for their AM and PM trips. Uh, so a lot of good things that we're bringing in, we're just being very slow because this is a fast-paced, um, implementation. And we're trying to make sure that our teams at the bus lots understand this new software and they're comfortable using it because if they're not comfortable, we're not gonna be able to give our parents a good product. Um, in terms of what you see within that Chipmunk app. And so we're working very hard daily to learn the software, um, to apply it to our operational routines, our daily routines. Uh, but we're excited about it or what it can offer to our families, uh, by working. So a lot of good safety features, um, that we have on our buses, both from a mechanical standpoint, from a technological, technology standpoint, and then just the teaching. Um, that's one of the things I must say that we wanna be able to get into the schools to go over bus safety, um, and work with bus safety with our, with our schools, especially at the elementary level from there. Alright, whoo, that was a lot of talking, trying to do my best. Uh, at this point in time, I will turn it back over to you, Board Member Boozer or Director Morrison, and any questions that you may have.
Alright, well, thank you so much, Director Baldwin and Director Morrison. I, uh, will open the floor. Two questions now. I'm going to, I'll, uh, wait a moment till I see hands pop up. And so, um, let's see, so, uh, uh, first Antoine Thompson and followed by, uh, Ramon Palencia Calvo and then Michael Witherspoon. So we'll move, so two-point-five minutes, we'll have a second round as needed. So we'll use the timer on, on this one for this discussion.
Well, first let me say, uh, thank you, uh, good, good to see you again, uh, Director Baldwin. Hope all as well, um, really appreciate your leadership. Just really two quick, quick questions. One is on, um, uh, off-road charging. Uh, there were, um, things like e-boost that can help along the, the journey to, uh, with charging as well for some of the buses. And then I wanted to see, um, I know that some of the routes are, are really too long, um, for electrification. And I wanted to see, are you all looking at other, um, alternative fuels that can save lives and get children off of some of the, uh, diesel-powered buses beyond electric? Obviously, we like electric buses, but everything that's going on and given the fact that some of the routes is just not practical. But I think anything that we can do to get kids off of traditional diesel buses would be, would be great. So just wanted to see, I know you had a little bit about hydrogen, which I like as well. Um, but, um, uh, we just gave an award to, um, my office gave an award to, uh, Prince William County because they use it in propane buses as well. But anything that's better than traditional diesel, I wanted to hear what you said. Thanks.
Right, so we are looking at propane, um, to, to offset the, the diesel, I mean, the electric impact. And we, we are kinda excited about it. So depending on what my funding stream looks like for the next year, um, you can plan on possibly having a couple of our propane buses in place. Yep, uh, the off-road charging came up with the county. Um, understanding the county's transit system, the bus that we use. And so that was something they were looking at. I'm not sure condition-wise, if there was any collaboration, we were looking to collaborate initially. Uh, but that's still a conversation that we're having when we talk about the off, off-road cho- charging.
We can help with that, um, because we have about two or three members that provide that service. Uh, perhaps we can follow up, put together a little private roundtable or public roundtable on that.
Yeah, yeah, I, I know, um, Councilmember Juanika Fisher, I think that's her name, uh, has been, uh, instrumental in trying to link our enti- our two entities together concerning the electrification, especially in her district, so. Thank you.
Great, thank you so much. Um, next, uh, Ramon Palencia Calvo.
Thank you and thank you for your presentation, Director Baldwin. Uh, I really appreciate the commitment to finding cleaner, healthier transportation options for the students and the communities. You know, we all share the goals of the climate plan. The goal is of protecting children's health, well-being and safeguarding the climate. You know, making sound investments, that's something that, uh, we know how important it is. I listened to your presentation, I have a couple of questions. If you can clarify, the first one is about, um, the safety of, uh, propane buses. While your, y- your, your presentation is right, ninety-six percent less nitrogen oxides. I, I, my understanding is that propane buses also produce carbon dioxide, carbon monoxide, particulate matter, also forming toxins. And according to the A-FLE tool of the Department of Energy, they are comparable, if not higher than diesel buses. So that's something that if you have some information to put that into perspective, the same as the life cycle of the buses. Propane is comparable in terms of emissions to diesel buses. And that's according to Department of, uh, uh, Energy, US Department of Energy. So I have a couple of questions, if you can clarify on that, the safety and the health of, uh, propane buses. And the other thing is the infrastructure. Wouldn't propane buses need additional infrastructure, uh, either, um, you know, charging infrastructure, propane, bigger propane tank, distribution of the fuel, permits to electrify those places, but that, that require some, uh, you know, transformations or remodel, redones of the current depots. Um, those are some questions that I have. And, and, and the last one is, uh, if I may, you know, would these buses be locked in for ten, twelve years? The life of a bus, you know, polluting, perpetuating that for another ten, twelve years? Or when you mentioned it's a bridge fuel, is that bridge doors? Not sure what it meant because it is still a fossil fuel burning. And it is gonna be for the ten years or twelve years that are, that are there. So those are some of the questions that I have. You can clarify. But again, thank you so much for the presentation. It's been, uh, very informative.
Awesome, well, thank you. Well, let me start real quick. So where we are right now, folks, is really a year in the work of studying if propane is viable. Uh, I have many of my colleagues, uh, that are not able to go to diesel or, excuse me, not able to go to electric, their step down is propane. And so what's happening is many of them have brought it in. Virginia, as a matter of fact, is probably, um, the next state closest to us that does have, uh, a majority of, um, our districts turning to propane. They either go into propane or they're going back to gas. And so, um, I know we're not gonna go back to gas, but we are in a year of work. And so I wanna be able to, while I'm not able to answer your question directly about the emissions totally, um, I'm gonna take that back and I'm, add that to it. And so we wanna be able to share out, you know, what the, the advantages and disadvantages are if we move to propane, okay? And so this again will be our year and work to get that done. Uh, and we'll be happy to come back and talk to you more about the emissions. Uh, as you sp- spoke about the infrastructure with EV, yes. Uh, there's a lot that goes into the infrastructure plan. And right now, as, as we've talked, um, about the projected two bus lots that we would have the chargers located at between, um, our Crossland Bus Lot and our Green Belt Bus Lot. Uh, we have, one is Pepco and another is, um, BG&E and the electric, the utility companies. And right now, oh, the, they, those are our biggest barrier of talking with them, giving the designs of what we would like to see and if they can accommodate the, the levels. And that is kinda where we are right now, is talking with them, letting them know and then them being able to come back to the table and let us know what they're willing and what they can do for those particular areas. And so that's been the conversation, uh, with our consulting group and, um, Director Matlock's group to better understand the need and if we can bypass that. So definitely, uh, a, a big contention when we talk about that infrastructure, the utility companies play a big hand in that. Um, I will say, what I know from the EV infrastructure versus the propane infrastructure, um, that is, is very, uh, the propane infra- infrastructure is less, um, intrusive. I mean, literally, we can bring the tanks in on a, um, uh, uh, on a trailer and drop the trailer and connect. So, but again, no full decisions, we wanna make sure we do the work and understand all of the, um, the advantages and the disadvantages of bringing in propane, if that's gonna be our choice. And as far as the life cycle of the bus, it will continue to be what Comar, um, has dictated for the state of Maryland. Right now, we change, uh, the life cycle of a bus is every twelve years. Um, it ranges from twelve to fifteen years. Alright, and thank you for your questions.
Alright, thank you, Director Baldwin. Um, next is Michael.
Hello, um, so from a student perspective, it is very exciting to hear about all the work that's being done. Um, personal testimony, like, I used to be on a bus route that was like three routes combined and then we went somewhere and then we split into two and one, and then we went somewhere and split again. So it's really exciting to hear that there are people, that there's like an audit and people working on it. And then from an environmental perspective, it's also inspiring to hear like that y'all are reformatting based on current, um, financial challenges with the state of everything. Um, so I had a question and clarification. So my question was about, um, public transportation. Um, there was a part in the presentation about encouraging public transportation, walking and biking. Um, it's my knowledge that PGCPS students have a, um, partner or like PGCPS has a partnership with City Bus, I'm pretty sure. Um, so like students get that free, but I was wondering if transportation has looked at metro, um, like DC Metro, especially for students who live closer to DC. Like I'm somebody who commutes from Hyattsville to Largo. Um, so, mm, sometimes DC Metro is the only option and I would have to pay like seven dollars to take the metro through DC, um, to get to or from school if the buses, there were an issue with that. Um, and then my point of clarification was, is Chipmunk supposed to be a new Stop Finder app? Um, yeah, apologies if that's like redundant and that's like been answered, but.
No, these are good questions, great questions. So I appreciate that, yes. So the public transportation side, the bus, right? The bus, the PG, the PG, Prince George's County Transit System offers free transportation on either routes. You just have to show your student ID from ages five to eighteen. As long, and as long as you have a ID, you can ride for free. In the past, there were designated routes that the bus handled, uh, that would go from certain areas and have stops in front of high schools. But Ramada actually revised routes over the summer. And I did not realize, or, you know, we were not, uh, part of that change. But many of those routes that the bus serviced were taken over by metro. So now students are having to pay. So I've actually sent an email to my counterpart on, um, the, on the Department of Public Works and Transportation side to try to get some more information about that because that does impact our students, especially in the northern end, very much so. Uh, and so we're, as we get more information of that, I'll be able to share, uh, about the public transportation use from that standpoint. So metro, to use metro, uh, this, there, there was a pilot done, I think a couple of years before I came, before I started. Uh, they, they worked it at one school and the return on investment was not what the, not what was expected. Because there's still a cost that would, uh, that the school system would have to incur. And so, uh, there may be different opportunities now, but the first time around and the pilot that was used, the return on investment was not high enough to where the district would want to continue it and expand it to other schools. So it may be a point that we can, you know, retry it and, and maybe do something different, but it has been tried to you, to, to your question, okay? And as well, yes, the, the parent app, the new parent app will be the Chipmunk app. It's gonna replace Stop Finder, okay? So we're rolling out by bus lots and by your route numbers as to when, uh, you can access Chipmunk. You can really download it now, um, you're not gonna see anything, but you'll, you can download it and go from there. And, and it's through your parents and they have to have a parent view account because it's associated with their email, okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you so much. Um, next is Joseph Jakuta.
It looks like he froze up.
Froze, but there he is.
Great, um.
Uh, Joseph, you're now on mute, but you're back.
Yeah.
I'm here.
Joseph. Can you hear me?
Oh, try, try again. Okay, there you are.
Circle back, I'll come.
Yeah, you'll have to start from the top.
Okay, you can hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, I don't know what's going on, I, I keep on, anyway. Sorry for the mute problems. Thanks for the presentation, Director Baldwin. Did wanna say I'm a little disappointed to hear about the propane approach, but I, I at least understand why you guys are thinking that way and I'm hoping, um, then some of the other numbers you provide, um, do show the, the, uh, other health benefits. Um, but I, my two questions were, one, on the first, uh, part where you were talking about the bus route consolidation. Well, I was sad to see how little that helped with the miles reduced. Um, it did seem like that's reducing the number of routes considerably and I'm wondering what effect that will have on bus electrification because I just, I'm assuming that you're going to have to electrify less buses if you have less. Because I just, I'm assuming that you're going to have to electrify less buses if you have less routes. And then my second question was gonna be, whatever wound up happening with the, uh, the federal funds, did any, is there any chance that resolved? In PGCPs's favor?
Gotcha. Yep, yep. All right, so with the electric bus and the, and the routes. What we had to do last year is target routes that would accommodate the bus and the range of hours. And with the driver shortage and the need, it was not conducive. Cause at this, at that point in time, you could use that bus basically one time a day. Uh, because we ran the charge down so much that it didn't, it wasn't able to charge between the midday and the start of the afternoon run. And so that's gonna happen when we are short and we're considering, we still have to double up runs, um, to get people. But what I do want to say is that the electric bus initiative can work in designated areas. Right? And, and I think my folks see that and that we just have to get there by, you know, having the staffing. So we're not going to abandon the project, but we want to be able to, uh, put buses in service. Where the demand is there, where, where, where the demand is needed. And so I don't want to defer like we're gonna go totally away from electric, uh, that's still the plan. But as a intermediary to get to more to electric, we're looking at propane, okay? So, uh, and again, we're in that year of work to really understand it and if it's gonna be a benefit to us from there. So we're gonna keep working with that and, and, and same thing with the routes. I did not, I failed to mention the grants, I'm sorry, I got all through this and, and didn't talk about the grants, so I'm glad you mentioned that, Mr. Jakuta. So, uh, we receive the rebate grants. We are, the last rebate was the clean, um, clean school bus rebate grant. We received that grant. But as the government transitioned and understandably that the grant is a, um, reimbursement. Meaning that we would have to spend the money first and then submit to be reimbursed back. Uh, the powers that be decided that that may not be the best, uh, route. Because if we spent the money that we didn't really have, we wouldn't have gotten the reimbursement back. And so it was, um, deemed that we would deny, not accept the rebate grant. But at the same time that occurred, the state of Maryland, the MEA, uh, came out with their grant opportunity. Very similar to the Clean School Bus Federal Grant. We opted to apply for the state grant, because we felt that was more of a guaranteed reimbursement. That we could afford, that we could invest in and, and get the funds back. So we wrote the grant. And we were awarded two point five million, uh, to procure electric school buses. At the time, it was just for electric school buses, because we had an infrastructure plan, which was mulligan. Now we don't have that plan, uh, for infrastructure. We do have the grant, um, to procure the eight buses, or up to eight electric buses, uh, and which we are working through. But we don't have a solid infrastructure plan, and that worries me, because it's kind of putting the cart before the horse. I want to have an infrastructure plan before I bring any more buses in. And so, uh, we're talking with the MEA about, is there opportunity that maybe we can do a low level charger? Some low level charging or low level charging plan, um, to one, if not both sites, to utilize some of that funding. On that nature. So, uh, that's where we are with grants, uh, the, the hard part right now, folks. Is mo- most of these grants are reimbursable, meaning that we're gonna have to, uh, front money. And we are, you know, I think we, we are going down, we're, we're asked to really scrutinize our funding. And really understand that if this is a absolutely needed deal to use funding to, uh, procure. Buses in this manner, we will, but I'm probably gonna have to run this up the chain in order to move forward. With any new initiatives for electric school buses, um, outside of what we already have. All right, hope that answers your question there, Mr. Jakuta.
All right, thank you. Um, I'm going, just because of the time, it's six ten, and I would like to close this out around six fifteen. Um, I'm going to just have us do one round of questions, but anyone who didn't get to ask your questions. Let's get those into Director Morrison to consolidate any follow-up questions and any follow-up. Um, meetings that may need to occur. So just wanted to announce that opportunity before we finish with James Roberson and Timothy Meyer. And then I move us to the end of the agenda. Thanks.
Okay, I, uh, nice to see you, Director Baldwin, this is James Roberson over at the Schmidt Center. Uh, one question and one offer, I'll start with the offer I heard you mention, uh, you want to work on education around safety. Uh, so the Schmidt Center has educators on staff and we may be able to support you. Or at least maybe help some of the folks that you're thinking about, uh, with that, uh, and then, you know, bring in some of the green pieces. So, you know, leave safety to you all, but maybe we could integrate, you know, talk about green transit, uh, fuel efficiency, those types of things. Uh, to bring that into, uh, educate the students as well. So if you're interested in that, please reach out. And we can help support, support there. Uh, question, and I may have missed this, so I apologize. Uh, do, are any of the electric buses in service now? Uh, and the reason I'm asking is because if they are servicing schools, that could help support their Maryland Green School application.
Um, we do not have any part, any of them part of a route right now. I am working to put, um, a couple of new drivers on the buses, um, out of the Douglas Bus Lot. Go from there. I, I know that, um, Berwyn Heights, you know, I want to get Berwyn Heights, Berwyn Heights back into it again. Uh, cause I know we were part of their application for, for last school year, so that is still top of my, my, my list here. Of when we do is to make sure I have some, some buses, uh, to take some of the routes from Berwyn Heights. And that's right out of the Green Belt Bus Lot, so I haven't forgot about them at all. But any others, if you know of schools that are applying, send them away. And we're gonna, we'll do our best to look at how we can, um, help support them with one of their electric buses, because we may, um, it's just. Have to look at it case by case. Good, thank you.
All right, thank you, uh, Timothy.
Uh, thank you, and thank you very much for the presentation. Um, I could probably do about five rounds on this particular one. Everything you talked about is right in my, in right, right in my wheelhouse, but, um, just wanted to say that I had the opportunity to work with, uh, both George and Anthony. Our Safe Passage Coordinators, and you're right, both of them have been phenomenal hires for PGCPs. I had one clarifying question, which is, you said, um, a hundred thirty-seven safety assessments performed. Was that for this school year or since they were hired? Cause I know they were hired towards the end of last school year, I'm just trying to make sure I get the, the data.
You know what, I, it may be since they were hired, um, they sent me numbers to, to share with you. So I'm not sure if that's from last year or, or like starting July one, I'm not sure.
Okay, I, I'll just say more than, more than a hundred safety assessments performed as a, as a safe number one. Where, just when we talk publicly about the benefits of this particular program.
Absolutely, absolutely, yeah. And I tell you what, if you want to reach out, cause I, look, they're not in my wheelhouse. So if you want to reach out directly to, um, Director Cunningham, he's our, uh, Safety Director. He's, he can kind of square you away more with the Safe Passage Coordinators.
Okay, I can certainly do that. And then one other, uh, actually two other quick things, you mentioned how the crossing guards are under, are under the county. There, and I think that's an important point, this is just for anyone at home who's watching this video, um, and the, the presentation of this meeting. A lot of times PGCPs ends up getting requests from parents for crossing guards, and I think it's important to. Make sure that everyone knows that that is actually a county, not a PGCPs request, but a county level request. Um, and one of the reasons why all of our walkability and school pedestrian safety work is so important is because. Even if we had an unlimited budget and it, we, there's the budget issues, there's the hiring issues, but we would never be able to put a crossing guard on every single corner. And so the, the solution ultimately is that we have to change behavior around our schools to try to make everything safer. And then the last very quick question for you is, uh, just asking if you have ever been to one of the Ruby Bridges Walk to School events? And I can follow up with you on email, uh, if you'd like an invitation to one.
I have not, and yes, I would.
I will make sure I follow up with you then.
We've done, I, my, my closest one was in another district and we did a Safe Routes to School. Um, the mini grant in which we did some walk to school activities for one of our elementary schools throughout the course of the year.
Thank you very, in the interest of time, I will just follow up you directly, directly on email then, Director Baldwin.
Yes, sir, yes, sir. Thank you.
All right, well, thank you all so much for the, uh, the presentations and for the questions and discussion. I, you know, I'll take a, a point of, of privilege around this topic and feeling the continued call to action. Around the immense infrastructure and planning, uh, needs for electrification of the buses. And, um, you know, as many men, many of you know from our work over these years that. That the, you know, CHISP organization and Ramon Palencia Calvo and, uh, parents and students. Were absolutely the spark of even having a climate change action plan at all. And I know as a Board of Education member was so influential, the, the advocacy has been so influential on my service. That I just want to reiterate the, the commitment to the electric buses. And that this update really reinforces that we were, we were having a moment with the Biden administration. Funding the buses all over the country and we knew PGCPs was going to be soon, we were gonna get the big numbers of buses. And that just didn't happen in the consequences of elect, elections. So we will continue this commitment. But it's, it's pretty clear, we need to have more of a, we need to re, put an advocacy plan back out there. Like exactly what we, we, Joseph Jakuta and I really after the plan realized. We were not advocating enough on infrastructure and that that was gonna be so hard and had to come first. Every, the bus is a visual image, it is, you know, it, it's a product, right? You need dollars for this product, a pretty simple equation, but it's not at all. And so I just want to say that, um, I want to, I want to dig back in as a Board of Education member. My top priority, as a board member, I get to put in my priorities to Dr. Joseph, the current interim superintendent. Starts with the Climate Change Action Plan, uh, you know, not losing that is, is my number one as, as a board member. So I want to thank everyone for, for your time this evening and for your continued commitment. And for, for being in for the long haul to do the hard work, because we don't always see that. And I know that, that this group is, is here to do the work and for all the years it will take and continue to pass the baton. Through our goals of twenty thirty and twenty forty, because we're not all gonna be sitting in, in these seats, right? So, um, with that, I will move to adjourn this meeting, item three point one. Um, I will, the chair informs the public that the next Virtual Climate Change Action Plan. Ad hoc committee, committee meeting will be held on December tenth, twenty twenty-five at four thirty PM. Please continue to check the PGCPs Board, Board webpage for more information and updates. And there being no further business, the time is now six nineteen PM in the October twentieth, twenty twenty-five. Climate Change Action Plan Ad hoc Committee Meeting is adjourned. Thank you all and have a great evening.
Thank you, thank you everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Timothy? I don't have Timothy's contact and my friend who's the counselor, Spring Hill Lake, said, yes, we'd love to do that, but he's.
Is the recording ending?